The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. It's an exciting night. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just so everybody knows what we're doing tonight, they're going to give a presentation. Mylona McBroom is going to give a presentation. Then after that, we're going to have public participation with comments or questions. The questions will be answered tonight. If they're unable to answer questions tonight, they will be posted. The questions to answers will be posted on bristlcentersquare.com. We'll have that up on the site, up on the board after. And any questions or comments you think about later could also be posted on that website, and they will be answered. Justin?
Oh, just wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight. I want to thank everyone that's here tonight, but also all the individuals that have been with us along this ride, and it continues. But so hundreds of folks that submitted their opinions, comments, suggestions to us, both online and at the Rockwell Park events as part of Mylona McBroom's survey work, right? Incredibly important for us. I know city council members are here and Board of Finance members, but really thank everyone here, everyone in the community, frankly, our taxpayers, for allowing us to embark on this project. I just want to, just for a minute, explain sort of the importance of why we started this project and how it's helped us so far and hopefully will help us moving forward. When the Center Square property sort of was given to the BDA to care for, it became clear that we needed a plan. We have a large asphalt lot across the street that can be difficult to define, and it's difficult to define for developers. And that's a problem. So we know that we needed to do something to really, I guess, in this sort of format, display the lot's potential. And also, obviously, serve as that aspirational goal for what we'd like to see on the lot. This helps developers. If developers were left with just a large parking lot essentially to figure out, it's going to cost them time, it's going to cost them money, resources. Developers don't want that. This gives developers a head start, I think, but also it lets them know what the community would like to see on the site. And I think it's a great goal to shoot for. So thanks very much again to everyone for sort of allowing us to do this and for helping us along the way.
Oh, here's Tom.
So thank you for everybody coming out this evening. We're the firm of Mylona McBroom, myself. We're both an engineering and a planning firm. Really, our job was really to, I guess, our biggest role here was to be listeners. And we listened to a lot of different people. We listened to the land. The land told us what the opportunity and constraints were. We listened to the history of Bristol and what the past has shown us to be successful. We listened to the market in terms of what is being built out on the street, what are the developers looking for. We looked, we listened to zoning. We listened to city staff. But most important, we listened to you. We went through probably one of our most exhaustive public information process that we have really worked on, on any of our projects. A lot of that has to do with Justin and the BDA really pushing us to make sure we were out on the street as opposed to simply getting surveys from online or such. But the goal of this is really a ma- while it says master plan, it's probably more better described as a vision. We gathered all the information that was provided to us and attempted to put that on the land. And also attempted to create a framework in which the developers could come forward and be successful on the project. So what's a master plan? Really, a master plan represents your vision, your, the community's vision for the future development of Center Square. It shows a general layout of roads and buildings and parcels. That then also allowed us to have a conversation with the city and Public Works in terms of what type of infrastructure should be installed to facilitate and expedite any development of the site. One of those things was about, as you can see, the large mass of pavement over there. It's really big. And really going back, harking to the history of Bristol, it's really about breaking it down to smaller scales. Because we think local-based, smaller developers are the ones who are going to be most successful because they understand the city of Bristol and what you're about. We are identifying barriers and working with the city to peel those barriers back in the hope that we can fast-track any future development that does come on to the property. We are also, as I said, identifying infrastructure, putting pipes so they're ready to go so that developer doesn't have to worry about that and moves it forward. And this is really the trend for the communities that are going to be successful is you have to peel away the barriers. Because as much as we all agree that Bristol's a unique place, you are in competition with other communities. And if we can do everything we can to make it easier for people to get excited about the property, that's what we're going to do. And then ultimately, we are trying to develop this into a graphical representation of what you want. And that allows the BDA and Bristol Economic Development to entice developers and create a vision. Because as you look over there today, it's really hard to picture what that future could look like. But first of all, we'd like to thank all of you and the members of the Bristol community who really gave us a ton of input. Thank you to both the BDA and city staff who worked very hard with us. If I had, I can't count how many meetings we've had in terms of gathering that information. So, but that being said is, remember, this is just a vision. It's a master plan. Ultimately, the market will dictate as to what type of development is coming in. But we also believe without at least throwing images up, it's going to be hard to picture. With that, we'd like to, what we're going to do is we're going to walk through, is Pat from my office will be walking you through kind of how we got here. And then Jason will walk you through some of the visioning that we've come up with.
Thanks, Tom. I'm Pat Gallagher. I'm a planner with Mylona McBroom. And I'll talk about some of our public outreach efforts, which, as Tom mentioned and Justin mentioned, was really kind of one of the cornerstone's of our processes. Understanding what the community's vision was and then incorporating those elements into the plan to the greatest extent possible. So we had several different methods for the community to get engaged. The first of which was the project website, bristlcentersquare.com. This has all of our study documents, workshop materials. And then this is also where tonight's presentation will be posted tomorrow and where you're able to submit comments, either for folks tonight who may want to submit something in writing rather than in person, or for the folks at home who can't be here tonight. One of our kind of biggest efforts was getting out into the community and really going where people are to get them excited about this project. So our community events were held over the summer, both at Rockwell Park, the first at the Summer Concert Series, and the second at the Rockwell Park Summer Festival. And this really gave us a good, a good broad net into which we talked to the community about this plan as well as starting to get some of their general preferences for how the site should be laid out as well as what different elements in terms of buildings, streetscapes, parking areas, and public spaces should look like. Another element of our public outreach was our downtown visioning survey. And we had over 550 respondents, over 90% of which were Bristol residents, take this survey. And this is the second highest turnout for a redevelopment project that we've worked on in the last few years. So it was a great turnout. And a lot of that goes back to the fact that, you know, the events were very, were, they were great events. There was a lot of people at the events. We were able to talk to a lot of different people about the project. So the survey was really broken up into two sections. The first section was really trying to understand people's aspirations, what they'd like to do downtown. And the second part really focused on more of the visual aspects of what people want things to look like. So in terms of that first part, some of our takeaways are, most people are coming to downtown Bristol by car. And so we wanted to make sure that we incorporated parking at the right amount on the site without overloading it and really encouraging people to park once and then walk to their destination. People like a lot of the existing things in downtown, including the existing small businesses, historic buildings on Main Street and North Main Street, and streetscaping. And so we saw this as an opportunity to really tie in the Main Street, North Main Street area through the site and continue some of that great infrastructure that the city already has. People also want to do more things downtown, whether that's shop, go out to eat, or do more events and activities. And this is all things that the city can influence. They can influence the uses of buildings through its zoning regulations, which already set a great framework for encouraging restaurants and retailers to come into downtown. And also, in terms of appearance, events, activities, these are all things that the city can control through either infrastructure improvements or through scheduled events. And I have to say, for a city of its size, Bristol has a lot of great events. And we were fortunate to be able to incorporate some of those into our project through our community events. So the second aspect was the visual preferences survey. And this is really taking the four core elements of our plan, which are buildings, public spaces, streetscapes, and parking, and showing people a variety of options on what these elements could potentially look like. And in one way, shape, or form, the city has influence over how these elements look. For buildings, the city controls how buildings look through its zoning regulations. And we've been working very closely with Bob in the Land Use Office to make sure that the vision of the current downtown zoning is reflected in the plan, which really aligns well with what the community told us they'd like to see. So really, a medium-density, street-facing buildings with parking behind, really a traditional-style building. And very much reflective of the current buildings on Main Street and North Main Street. The second element is public space. And this is something, again, that the city has influence over in terms of infrastructure improvements. People desired a hardscape, a public plaza-type space. And Jason will go into more where we located those on the site and why we located them where we did in his presentation. Green space was also the second most desired, a more passive green space versus an active green space. And we incorporated that into our concept plan as well. Streetscapes are the third element. So how the streets look, how it feels to walk down a street. And not surprisingly, people tended to like the elements that already exist on your great streetscapes on North Main Street and Main Street. Street trees, wide sidewalks, space for outdoor dining, and really a overall aesthetic improvement that can carry your streetscape through the Center Square site. Right now, the city is undertaking a streetscape design, which Jason will talk more about in his section. And the final element is parking, where we showed folks pictures of both on-street and off-street parking. People tended to like angled parking for on-street parking. Again, this is incorporated into the streetscape design that Jason will talk about a little later. And one of the few areas where we didn't seem to get consensus was off-street parking, where the community was somewhat divided over whether they'd prefer to park in a surface lot or a parking garage. And so what we did was we kind of took this as an opportunity to be flexible and to design the site in a way that could allow the city to have one or the other depending on timing and future development. And so to the greatest extent we could, we incorporated all of these into our plan. And particularly, all of these preferences are being incorporated into the infrastructure improvements that the city is planning on investing in. So this is the streets, the streetscape improvements as well as some of the public spaces. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jason, who will walk through some of the background, some of the site constraints and opportunities, and then get into the design.
Thanks, Pat. My name is Jason Williams, and I'm a landscape architect with Mylona and McBroom. So starting off, we analyzed the existing conditions on the site, really to identify the opportunities and constraints for future development. We looked at existing site conditions, the infrastructure and utilities, current land use and zoning, the current market conditions, as well as transportation and all the circulation that happens around the site, and the existing parking within the downtown area. And some of the constraints that we identified were that there is topography issues from North Main Street heading up in, through the site to the railroad tracks. The site rises about 15 feet. This is really going to influence the placement of buildings and the orientation of these buildings on the site. There are existing utilities currently within the site. And we've identified that the majority of these utilities can be abandoned, with the exception of two main utilities. On the left-hand image, you can see the North Creek Conduit running along North Main Street and coming down, entering the Quabic River Conduit. As well as in yellow, down in the southwest corner, a electrical easement. Both of these utilities make it difficult to place buildings directly on the sidewalk on North Main Street as well as satisfying the current zoning setbacks into the site. Additionally, challenging demographics in the area as well as low-traffic volumes potentially make it difficult to draw in regional or national chains. But there are a lot of opportunities on the site. Recognizing that development is likely to occur over a period of time with undeveloped portions, there's the potential for these areas to become a community asset and programmed in the future by the city for events. Looking at the perimeter roadways, there is space for roadway improvements, especially on Main Street and Riverside and North Main Street. That could include the addition of parking, which I will get to. Roadways, we're looking at providing roadways through the site. So an opportunity to provide vehicular access in through the site essentially divides the site up into segments, creating smaller development parcels. As Patrick mentioned, public plazas and green spaces would likely be located in areas that cannot support buildings. And leveraging existing developments happening in the downtown with Bristol Hospital coming downtown, the recent call center adding 400 employees really enables what we like to call boots-on-the-ground, seeing people that are in the downtown so small businesses realize there is the potential for growth. So working through the public engagement process and our plan development, we started with bubble diagrams. We actually created seven bubble diagrams, as you can see in the upper left-hand corner. I also want to mention all plans moving forward in the presentation. North Main Street is on the bottom. Riverside is on the right-hand side. And North Main Street is up above our site. North is to the left. So with our bubble diagrams-
Main Street's on the top.
Main Street's on the top, I'm sorry. In looking at the bubble diagram, this is really a first go at what is the potential use areas of the site. Pink being potential building locations, gray being parking, and green being public spaces. The option on the left was voted as most liked by the community. In the upper right-hand corner, we started looking at 3D Google mapping in Ariel, understanding that this project is likely to occur in phases and what are the potential aesthetics of this project occurring in phases. And then on the bottom, we went right into conceptual plans, getting on the drafting board and sketching out, based on the bubble diagrams, what are some options to create our preliminary master plan. Now, there's really, and unfortunately, I don't think anybody can see the arrow up there. There's really four main components of the project. If you start on Riverside Avenue and move north, we have a public roadway which enters the site to the north and circles around and comes down onto North Main Street. We have, we show internal parking as well as buildings, as you can see in gray, and public spaces dotted throughout the site. To the north in gray is the future Bristol Hospital site, which we don't have available for you tonight, but that will be made officially available to the public next week. We've developed two cross-sections. Sure. Go back for a sec. We've developed two cross-sections of the site. The first cross-section is a thin line, which is on the northern development parcel that runs from North Main Street up to the railroad tracks. And B cross-section is on the southern development parcel. So if we look at the cross-section, the upper cross-section on the left starts at North Main Street. You can see the vehiculars on North- perfect. You can see the vehiculars on North Main Street moving into the site and the small blue rectangle representing the underground North Creek Conduit. So you can see the reasoning behind needing to place the buildings and foot, and future footings away from that. What that does, though, is it provides pedestrian amenity space just to the left of that building as well as to the right of that proposed two-story building. In the center space, we have two drive areas and an interior parking lot that is screened on both sides by the building. And to the right, we have an additional two-two-story buildings with the northern public parking, public roadway just in between them. Having these buildings fronting right on this public roadway is really going to give a village and community feeling to the streetscape. Just beyond the building on the right, we have parking, and then the cross-section moves up into the railroad area. Cross-section B on the lower, on the lower slide, again, on the left starts with North Main Street, moves over with the two-story mixed-use building, set back from North Main Street due to the river conduit. And then in a large interior space, which includes parking and a potential central pedestrian space with a potential gazebo. Moving to the right, we have our mixed-use two-story building. And then to the right of that building, a main, the main, public roadway. And if we move to an enlargement of that public roadway, starting on the left, we've got our two-story mixed-use building with potential retail restaurant on the first story and a nine-foot-wide amenity space just outside of that if a tenant would like to place outdoor seating or whatever benches. We move then into a six-foot pedestrian sidewalk, moving right into a five-foot-wide amenity space, which would include trees and lighting and potential benches. And then into our roadway, which is one-way in each direction with five-foot bike lanes on each side of the roadway and a center median. In some areas, a center median would be flush, colorized stamped asphalt, like you see currently on North Main Street. And in other areas, it could be a raised vegetated island. Where is the? So as Pat mentioned before, the city is currently engaged in the design of the streetscape around the site. And this is very important. It's one of the kickstarters to get this site active. So we analyzed the parking and the roadways around the site and identified that all of the existing curb lines, with the exception of bump-out areas on the corners to aid in pedestrians crossing the street, all of the existing curb lines remain the same. There is the potential for a road diet or modifications to the lane configurations on Riverside Avenue, which currently has six driving lanes. There's the potential to put parking on both sides of Riverside, angled parking on the north side and parallel parking on the south side, a center median, and traffic one-way in both directions. Additionally, by looking at the existing parallel parking and no parking on Riverside Avenue, we've been able to identify that we can add an additional 10 public parking spaces, parallel parking spaces on Main Street, a total of 46 parking spaces on Riverside Avenue with the angled parking on the north and parallel on the south, and an additional 16 public parking spaces along our site on North Main Street. One of the main things that came out of the public engagement is the ability for pedestrians to use this site. And so what you see here in pink are pedestrian routes. These identify all of the sidewalks within the area and really create a diverse system of walkways that are interrupted with open space destination areas shown in the yellow. The idea behind this is that if you provide plaza spaces or mini parklets for pedestrians that can see the other pedestrian spaces when they are in one, they're likely to move to the next one. So imagine in the lower right-hand corner, you're crossing the street and you enter the entry plaza. You can see now two other plaza spaces. And in moving to those open plaza spaces, which could include outdoor sculptures, you're walking by businesses. And it's very likely that you're thinking, wow, I'm going to grab a coffee. I'm going to go to one of these pedestrian spaces and call a friend to come down and meet me. Understanding that this site is likely to develop in stages, we identified two phases of potential development. Phase one identifies in A, the public roadway improvements by the city, an additional roadway improvement B, and the northern development parcels in B, and then our southwestern parcel in C. Next. Phase one area A includes the construction of this central roadway that also includes a bus stop and all associated amenities. This roadway is currently in design. So this is happening. And one of the main things with developing this municipality, developing an improvement, the streetscape as well as this internal roadway, is that in our experience, in order to kickstart development in a downtown area, the city has to really start off by making some improvements. So kudos to the city for acknowledging this. Kickstart to development. Phase one B area is the construction of the public roadway heading north as well as a large parking area to the north. We understand that there's a lot of people currently using the parking on this site. So this 118 parking space, parking area will allow people to continue that use. The area in B, shown as grass, is really an area converted to public active or park space that we see and we've heard from the public can be programmed for seasonal events such as pumpkin picking, mum festivities, maybe Christmas tree sales in the winter, temporary ice skating rinks, farmer's market, and even craft markets. Again, getting boots-on-the-ground during the day for future small business owners that are seeing, wow, people are using this space. Phase one area C is the beginnings of a development parcel in the southwest, which includes a mix of two-story buildings, approximately 88,000 square feet, placed along our main public roadway with interior parking screened from the major roadways by the buildings, three pedestrian plaza areas, and all landscaping, walkways, and amenities associated with the development. Phase two area B is looking at the northern portion of the site as well as a small parcel along Main Street. Area B1 includes two-story buildings, approximately 67,000 square feet, that are placed along our northern roadway with interior parking, again, screened by the buildings, and a small plaza space adjacent to the bus stop. again screened by the buildings and a small plaza space adjacent to the bus stop. B2 includes infill development and reducing the size of the northernmost public parking, Two buildings are placed along the northern port, port portion with a small parking area between and two additional buildings with associated parking just to the rear and to the side of them. All four buildings approximately thirty thousand square feet. B3 is our small, uh, parcel on Main Street, which is a very viable development option. It's a two-story mixed-use building fronting right on Main Street, approximately sixteen thousand square feet with dedicated parking just behind the building. So, a couple of things that come out of the preliminary master plan. One, we've identified that municip, the municipality is responsible and is in the process of jump-starting all development. This master plan is a flexible plan. What you see may not be built. This, as Tom mentioned, this is clearly a vision. And we see that this flexible development will occur in stages as development really warrants it. On the north side, on the northernmost parking area, there is the potential for a future parking garage. We've looked at sizing a parking garage on that northern, uh, parking area and it does fit. This master plan, though, can change. And so we wanted to see 3D what the plan view preliminary master plan shows. And we have some, excuse me, we have some enlargements on boards, uh, at the far side of the room that you're welcome to take a look at, uh, in more detail. In the upper left-hand corner, this view of the two-story mixed-use buildings set back from North Main Street is a southern view. North Main Street's on the right and this is our main entrance into the site. The perspective on the lower left is within the site and a public plaza on the left. This view's looking northwest into the site. In the, uh, right-hand corner, perspective C is a direct view on North Main Street looking up into the site with the buildings flanking both sides of the entrances. And in the lower right-hand corner is a view from Bracket Park looking into the entry plaza to the northeast into the site. Developing further perspectives, um, show a little bit more about what this, what the developments could look like. This view is taken across North Main Street looking at our entrance into the site. Now, it's important to mention that this exact picture may not be built. But perspectives like this really act as a guide, uh, used by the city and, uh, developers to really show the potential that could come out of, uh, a master plan like this. And our last perspective is again, in the site, looking to the northwest. You can see the public roadway with the center median on the left, uh, with bike lanes, public plaza on the left, and to the right, the entrance heading into the northernmost public roadway with parking and develop, and the backs of, uh, buildings and the development along North Main Street.
All right. So just to kind of wrap up, um, and, and our next steps here, um, so everything that we hear from you tonight, uh, will be used to shape the final master plan. We anticipate, uh, releasing the final plan later this spring. Um, and just to kind of give a recap of some of the ongoing projects and initiatives that we intend to keep following over the next few months, that they include the Bristol Hospital Development as, as Jason mentioned, um, next week, um, they'll be releasing, uh, some of their preliminary plans. Uh, internal roadway and utility design is continuing, um, as well as the streetscape improvements on Riverside Avenue, North Main Street, and Main Street. There's also a lot of future actions that we'll be recommending and we'll elaborate on when we release the final master plan, really the next steps the city needs to take in order to make this vision, uh, into a reality as the site gets developed over time. The first is a parking management plan. Um, we kept hearing, uh, both from the public as well as city staff, a desire to have shared parking, and there's a lot of logistics going on with shared parking, so that would be something explored further there. Finalizing the property line revisions and site subdivision based on the, the roadways. Utility easement abandonment, there's a lot of old utilities associated with the mall that could be removed, as well as applying for grant applications to fund some of the infrastructure improvements that we talked about today. So with that, uh, we'll start the public dialogue and just to, um, recap, we do have, um, a comment section on the Center Square website. If you go to bristlcentersquare.com backslash contact, there'll be a contact box that'll allow you to write in comments if you so choose, um, or, or we'd love to hear from you speaking tonight as well.
So anyone who'd like to ask questions, come on up to the podium. Please just give your name and address for the record. Uh, don't all run at once. Andy?
Uh, it's Andy Adams, sixty-seven Bayberry Drive. You may have said this, um, I'm not sure because you gave a lot of information, so, um, I'm very impressed. I like, like it so far. I do have a couple of questions, though. Um, how many stories are all the buildings?
Two stories.
Two stories, so you have a, a lower level and then a second level. Um, is any residential included in the downtown?
So we purposefully didn't include uses in any of the buildings, really the concept intending to, um, talk about how high the building should be and how large they should be. Really, we wanted to keep the door open and see what prospective developers would propose to fit in those scale buildings.
Okay. And the other, um, question I have right now, and I have more, but, um, how many parking spaces total are included in the downtown? That's including the street parking on Main Street, Riverside, North Main, as well as on the development itself? Do you have an idea? And that's, I know there's no parking garage yet. Obviously, that would give you more space, um, but right now, in the, in the early, yeah, just, I'm just curious.
So what we can do is we can, uh, we'll, we'll post the exact number on the Q and A on the project website. That way, we're not, uh, just making something up.
That's perfect. Thank you.
All right. We'll do.
Let me also add on the, uh, in, on the parcel where the parking is going to be next to the new McDonald's, that is designed so that if we need, when we need a parking structure, we go up from there. It's already, it's, it's the right, right base and everything.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sam.
Sam Okus, three ninety, three ninety-eight Riverside Avenue. I'm here asking a question mostly for the Bristol Auto Club. When do you, when, how soon do you expect to start doing infrastructure work?
I was in touch with Dave today and you're going to be good to go, uh, and where you're going to be this, this summer. You'll be all right.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, you'll be all right. Dave already contacted me first thing this morning.
And it looks, I like the plans. I think it's a lot better, no apartments and nothing, and I would rather see it do it the other way, if you don't have to do departments.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to stress real quick, like on that point and others. Again, what you, what we saw today was a vision and every project's going to be unique, right? Every project has its own requirements, so whether that's building size, building coverage, parking requirements, the whole deal, we're really going to treat every proposal the same. And what we, and what that means essentially is that the BDA, the mayor, everyone else works really closely with folks, um, you know, to invite them to get with our land use people and in front of the appropriate boards. I just, I just want to make sure the public's expectations, we, we try to stay open-minded on this stuff. Um, from a development perspective, that's invaluable. Every project's unique. We, we want to use this concept as an invitation and as an inviting sort of way to engage developers, not as, uh, like a penalty, right? So, um, whether it's residential, retail, I'm in the business to, uh, engage all sorts of different developers. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
And Justin, just to, to add to that, you can see that this is a pretty comprehensive plan, uh, not set in stone, but it's really based on the fact that there were, it was ask, 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 lots of data that, that's been gone through over the years. You know, it, it's, it has been vacant for a long time. We are trying to do this right and that's where the public's input becomes very important. And there's the, um, the website, so if, if people would take note of that. You're talking about seventeen acres that are getting broken up with doable, you know, there, there's nothing where somebody's going to come in and try to do it all. And so it's really smaller scale, but everything will fit together. So I think you folks did a, a great job just gathering it all together and putting a vision up there.
So let me just, uh, Tim, will you come up?
Tim Gamash, thirteen eighty-nine Stafford Avenue. Uh, first off, I want to say I'm very impressed with the plan. I like all the sidewalks. It does have a pedestrian-friendly feel to it, but I heard the phrase, "shared parking." Now, the last time we were here, the people that were running this operation before you all came along, residential was a big part of the project and there was some discussion about shared parking, namely during the day when someone would be working, someone would be using their parking space, and when they were coming home from work, they were supposed to be able to just use their parking space. And I saw a lot of problems with that, so I'm a little leery about the phrase, "shared parking." Could you explain to me, you know, what way you plan on using that with this project now, or do you, was that just a?
I, I don't recall saying "shared parking" in the plan.
I think, I think I mentioned it a little bit. Um, and that was more so, I think, to talk about, um, particularly as the site, uh, as the city invests in more of the on-street parking, how do we perhaps incorporate that into the sites that the sites themselves don't need as much parking as they would if they would need to incorporate all of that on the site? Um, if, you know, a whole section of the site gets developed by the same developer and there are many buildings on that site, that's also an opportunity, um, to have shared parking on the same parcel split between many businesses, um, you know, as Ju, uh, Justin keeps saying, we, we want to keep things as flexible as possible, but kind of understanding some of the logistical challenges ahead of time and having a plan going forward because, you know, parking is an important part of, of just about any downtown plan and making sure that some of those logistical issues are figured out ahead of time, we think will be a, a logical next step.
Do you think a parking garage is going to be really necessary?
Uh, that would be our hope because that would be a definition of, of a high level of success.
The reason why I asked that question, I don't know, somebody might help, Mr. Smith might be able to help me with this. Um, the average cost of maintaining a parking space in any parking garage, the lowest number I've heard is fourteen hundred dollars a year, up to and including twenty-two hundred dollars a year to maintain one parking space.
Well, I think that's.
So the idea of a parking garage can, eventually can get.
Tim, that gentleman right there is our parking consultant.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, and, and one of the reasons why it was shown in the very last phase, um, the, the intent is that a parking garage is only a what-if way in the, in the future.
That's why I asked if it was necessary.
No, it's not necessary.
Okay.
Um, but obviously with a parking garage, you have the ability to have more development because you're not, and, and clearly the city's vision is not to make this to be a sea of parking. That's a, that's very clear throughout.
We've already had that.
Yeah, the parking, so the parking is, uh, parking garage, uh, once again, is flexibility. We laid out that surface parking lot so it could be stacked right up at a later date. So, um, but you're right, the economic challenges associated with a parking garage are, are significant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, though.
Thank you. Thanks.
Laura Bartok, one forty Carrot Road. Um, I just had a quick question. I went to the planning meeting on Monday, or planning committee meeting on Monday, and there was a slight difference between the, um, amount that was originally asked by the hospital of three-point-six-five acres and it changed to three-point-seven-two acres. Is this based on three-point-six-five for them or three-point-seven-two? Does that change things at all?
Three-point-seven-two.
Okay.
There was, there were some calculations that were wrong.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that's what their plan was based on.
Three-point-seven-two.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Tom?
Just a comment and a question. I agree, I hope there is a parking garage. Talks, it, it shouldn't mean success. You also don't take a lot of surface parking and, and eliminate, uh, development costs and every major city that I've been in has parking garages, so, I mean, they have to be maintained. So if you build them right and maintain them right, they're not overly costly. Um, I have a question about the bicycle, which I think is great, but I think you have to go a little bit further and make the rest of downtown Bristol cycle-friendly because if you don't do that, people aren't going to ride their bikes across the street, and I ride a lot, so hopefully.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
Susan Brush, one ninety-three High Street. Will there be somebody coordinating designs of these buildings from the different lots? I mean, you're going to have two, three, four developers. You don't want, like, the red, white, and blue building up on North Main Street and then, you know, an all-glass building. Something that would...
Good question. So there will be, uh, I think the BDA frankly, at a staff level first and then up to the, the downtown committee and eventually our full board, we're going to be looking at those things. To a certain extent, our zoning regulations lay out some sort of, um, guidelines, um, but we may take it a little further. Again, it's always a balance with the BDA. We, we, we want to develop responsibly, right? So we want to be able to be engaging and, and encourage developers to work with us, but at the same time, we understand what the community's looking for in buildings downtown, so we'll do our best to hopefully.
Yeah, because you want some kind of continuity of, of design through the whole area.
We agree. We agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Orlando Kelfi, sixty-four Leslie Court. So, within the areas A, B, and C, will they all be zoned uniformly?
They currently are in the BD1 zone, the whole site is. So we intend that that zoning designation would stay. We didn't propose any zoning changes.
And, and for planning, have they thought about, uh, mixed use? For example, could you put in a daycare center next to a bar?
I'll pass that one to Bob Flanagan.
So, a, a lot of the, I'll just, if you don't mind, um, if you take a look at the BD1 zone regs, a lot of that is sort of laid out. But again, the BDA would be conscious of those types of issues and of course, we work really closely with Bob Flanagan, our planner, and, and the planning commission zoning, so, um, things that we're going to have, we're going to look out for.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead. David? You know, I'm, I'm really happy that we had some positive feedback here because, um, you know, we, we, we learned a lot from our last attempt. We had a great amount of information that we've shared with our, 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 our Malone McRum, McRum. And, um, if you look at it, it's really based on flexibility. I heard the term Orlando use, mixed use, things like that. The beauty, I think, of part of this plan is, is the flexibility in how it's laid out. We, we could, you know, it's an important part of the process for the future to have this concept of recycling buildings if we go through the economic cycles. And there could be big buildings, there could be small buildings, but it, it, this plan adds a lot of flexibility for future developers. And, and I got to tell you, um, um, we try to find flaws in some of this stuff and, um, the way it's laid out, it work, it could work very nicely. I think that's it.
Sean Riss, fifty-three Lancaster Road. I'm happy to see that, um, the results that you got from the survey, the, uh, density and the building height is reflected in the final, I don't know if I should call it the final plan.
Subtle plan.
Okay. Um, it says the plan represents the community's vision, what they want for future development. So I'm just wondering, um, with the bicycle amenities, did you derive that conclusion from the survey or where, where, how did the bicycle path amenities come into play in the, into the final concept?
Sure. So, um, we didn't specifically ask about bike lanes in the survey, um, but as we went through some of the design process and realized, um, kind of the minimum width of the roadway and kind of being cognizant that we don't want very wide lanes and we need some extra space, we thought, uh, that bicycle lanes would be a logical addition without necessarily changing the profile of the road, but just using that space more efficiently.
Okay. All right. Um, with the, with the shared parking, um, and the sidewalks on the lot, would the city be responsible for removing the snow on that, or is that going to be something that the, the people that develop, I mean, is that public?
That's, that's to be determined.
Okay. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Although I could say the main road is going to be the city's road.
Right.
Um, what happens inside of the developments is still, it'll be negotiated as we go. Anyone else? Yep. Come on. Not going to say no to you.
Andy Adams, sixty-seven Bayberry Drive. So I know, um, programming is key to, to a very vibrant revolts downtown. It's getting people downtown, um, because there are people who are working during the day and you want things to keep them down there after work as well as bringing people down Monday through Friday, not just on the weekends. So I noticed the, um, public space you have, um, in the recent development, there was going to be a piazza, and I know that's, that with the development of that, that cost several millions of dollars of putting it in. My question is, the public space that you have here now, they have the patch across the street and I know pretty much what the size of that is. What are the sizes of those parklets or those public spaces, the green areas that you are, um, have throughout the region? Can you give me an idea of looking at across the street at that, the patch, what that is right now, how big those spaces are relative to that?
Sure. What we could do is we could identify all of the six pedestrian spaces shown in yellow here, and we could provide, uh, on the website, the dimensions of all those in the square footages.
Okay. So I guess it'd be a question for city, um, programming. So when you think of programming and what we can do, I know the farmer's market would be something we want to really grow. That was what we were doing, um, before. Is there an opportunity where you could actually close, like we did for the flavored food fest, close Riverside Avenue from, um, Main Street to North Main Street to actually have more public space for bigger events, or is that not an option?
When you say close, close for good or?
No, no, just close for the event.
Yeah, like we do on North Main Street, even when we have the car show, as events come up, we go to the police board and we, absolutely. I mean, we want that.
Okay. So you could do like the first Friday where it's closed and we have those kinds of events?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That would be great.
All right.
Mike Wilson, 300 Divinity Street.
You mentioned there would be bus stops on the city road. I commend you for bringing buses into the development instead of just having them to continue to go by as they do now. Have the locations of those stops been determined, or is that still in the conceptual?
We've identified one bus stop location, which is...
Right in the, where's your marker? On the curve. Smack in the middle.
Right there.
Right in the center.
Okay.
And it's gonna have an indentation, if you've ever seen, my way I describe it is, if you've ever been to West Farms Mall where you see they have the bus that you could pull in?
The lay-by, yes.
That's how that's gonna be.
Well, that's central, and so most of the development would be walkable from the bus stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I just wanted to mention, you know, I see in the audience, I'm probably gonna miss someone, council board, finance, planning, zoning, and parking authority. If I missed your board, I apologize. But, you know, it's great to see everybody interested. Monday night, 6:30, same room, we're gonna be having the hospital presentation. Public will be also allowed to ask questions after the presentation, and a possible vote on the hospital contract Monday night as well. So things are happening, things are moving. As I always tell people, just because you don't see trucks or something on the depot square, or, sorry, center square, doesn't mean that things aren't happening. So, thank you all, and have a good night. Also, one more thing, the website is up there, so if you think of questions, shoot them on the website, and then any answers will be put back on the website. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.